For him to say 15 trucks a day, that's not even close to the effect. Yep, my other concern is for existing wells in, just not his mine. I actually have a piece of a joint pond, but for my neighbors as well. I know I can't bring it up, but in Situate, Rhode Island, the project just went on, and they're not even halfway through the project yet, and two people across the street already have lost their wells. So it does, he says it's no impact on the wells. It's gonna be an impact. That's all I gotta say. Thank you.
Thank you. Question on the negotiation with the alternative truck group. Do you know the timeframe when it would be determined if that is an accessible truck group?
If Lover's Lane or if...
The alternative.
The alternative. There is, there was a proposal on the table. All I can tell you is that ONG has given Mr. Hackett a proposal to do the work for him. I know that there's been some back and forth, so obviously, I think, you know, the sooner the better.
So currently, that alternative is not part of this application?
It's not part of this application because it's not guaranteed.
Okay. So the proposed truck group is via Lover's Lane with 15 trucks per day?
Correct.
Approximately three per hour during the operating hours?
Three trips per hour.
Three trips per hour.
Three trips per hour. So, you know, and to the gentleman's point I just spoke, and he said, "Well, there'll be more than that. There'll be more than 15 truckloads per day." I believe that if the application says that we have 15 truckloads a day, this commission certainly has the authority to condition approval on that based upon what the application's stating.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions on this application?
Yep, Art Haggerty. Quick question about the ONG exit route. Is there already an existing road there?
Yes.
Yes.
Is it one of the phases that has already been excavated and is being remediated?
It's no, currently under excavation.
So it's in that phase now?
Correct.
Okay.
But it is not part of this application. So we have to consider that the, um, the route is Lover's Lane. There is no proposed alternative at this time.
There is no other alternative.
Just to be clear.
Just to be clear, I just wanted to make sure it wasn't a phase that is in the future and they're gonna excavate it now.
No.
That's all.
Thank you.
Hi, Gary Mato, John Landowner. Just have a quick question for this gentleman here. Which way is the drainage, the elevation drainage from here? Okay. You failed to mention that, you talked about the little pond in the back, but you forgot the 300-acre great cedar swamp, which is quarters of the property to the left of your map there. All right. Quarters of property to the left of your map there. That's where the flow would be going, so that definitely needs to be remediated, make sure nothing gets down in there. Looking 50 yards from where this trucks will be going by, I'm questioning whether there's gonna be any dust abatement, any thinking considerations for that?
It is done on the plan that dust abatement could be by water, but not by putting the council floor, anything in that nature. It would be, it would have to be just by application of water to be any dust and that would correct.
I don't know if anybody else here was living on Lover's Lane when Cliff Green and his sons was excavating, off of the same right-of-way and same paths, all of that, up to 100 trucks a day. It was a living hell. I just want everybody to know that this is not gonna be easy for the people that live there, especially me. Everything is covered in dust, possibly. Your gutters have a half-inch of mud in them, and there's nothing to do about it. And sharing the right-of-way, I'm wondering if there's gonna be any, when Cliff Green left, the right-of-way was destroyed, and he did nothing about it, even though he guaranteed he would take care of it. Or I don't know if that's gonna be taken care of also.
Is there maintenance plan for the entry and exit to the site?
Well, all of it is just, you know, keep it maintained and keep it passable for the duration of the project, but you have to understand too that there's going to be a residence here, so the driveway, at the termination of any excavation activities, the driveway will be improved and repaired in whatever form necessary to allow for the passage of a resident that lives there.
Okay. Just a final observation, and I know Mr. Haggerty's an honest man, and I like him, but there's a lot of profit to be had by building these two ponds on, probably over a million dollars in profits from the soil.
All right. I disagree. A million, a million dollars in a thing.
Well, we can't comment on...
I understand, but, you know, it could be just a thinly available attempt to excavate gravel without getting it proper.
Each truckload of gravel sells for $300.
Sir, I can't have you yelling in the meeting.
Okay. Each truckload of gravel sells for $300. It's over 4,000 gallons of gravel. I don't know what the math works out.
That's 1.25.
That's 1.25 million, seven?
In the ground, my experience with gravel in the ground, if you have someone take it out for you and transport it to their site, they're probably giving you $2 a yard for it. You know, it's not $300 a truck if you're not, if you're, if you're not selling it to someone or trying to get rid of it. If ONG's going in there and they're gonna be taking the gravel up and using their equipment and transporting it to their site, you know, I think, you know, I'm not even gonna say I think, I'm absolutely certain that these, these numbers are highly exaggerated.
So coming back to dust control and the anti-tracking path, the location of the tracking path, the determination of where that should be in relation to the site?
That's where it is currently.
Currently?
That's where it is currently, so that's why we showed it, and that's, that's where the pavement begins. Up to this point, you see the gas line as a gravel driveway. It transitions to pavement once and that's why it's there.
Okay. And then for the dust control mitigation measures, those are not currently outlined?
No, I believe, I believe it should be on there.
Yes, it is.
Yeah. There are the numbers. Dust control everywhere.
Thank you. Okay. And then the trucks, 15 per day?
Correct.
All right. So if dust mitigation and trucks were not abided by, that would be notified to zoning enforcement, who would then come out to the site and enforce any conditions. So we're not out there every day, so we would depend on neighbors to indicate whether they were abiding by conditions or not. So just as an awareness note for the public. Are there any other comments or questions?
One more, just like Easton's favorite. Toads and the lizards that live over there, Rossons did a big survey on them, and they're prone to be in that area. Are they gonna do a survey about that as well?
So I think you addressed it. There's currently no habitat.
There's no habitat. Where are the ponds are proposed to be excavated, the sculped ground, and you yourself said it used to be a junkyard. There's no habitat there.
It was all wetland and Googling. It's already been cleared out by some of them.
This is not gonna be a back-and-forth debate, okay? You ask the question, we'll ask for the answer, but we're not gonna argue.
Let me say something.
Sure.
If you Google the site and see how much excavating has been done there since he applied for this permit, a lot of work has been done there since he applied for this permit. I came to the town hall in July. He was out on Indian. They were supposed to send somebody down there, nobody came down there. All of this work is being done. He's been working seven days a week down there. Eight, 10 hours a day, opened up this whole field. Now everything's gone, but nobody has nothing to say about it. I'm gonna say something about it, because I lived there, and it's my property. I've been there 15 years. My well's not gonna get destroyed by contaminants from somebody else doing illegal shit.
Thank you. Could you indicate the distance between the neighboring properties on the map? And what kind of buffers there are between?
The, to the east, east, it's fairly clear, it's fairly clear up to the zone property here. Here's, uh, there's, up against the, the ONG property, pretty much around the perimeter, it's wooded, there's mostly substantially pine, if I recall. And to the, it's also, it's also wooded to the south, but I believe that a bulk of, a bulk of Mr. Haggerty's property is clear to the property.
Any other comments or questions?
Could I take a look at that, please?
The map is public information. You can certainly look.
Thank you.
Where's Lover's Lane?
And just speak loudly enough for the rest of the audience, please.
Lover's Lane's over there. It's been declared. All of this land over there, right?
That's, that's its property.
It's his property, but it's all contaminated.
There was a junkyard there for 45 years. Bulldozers buried, cars buried. I can tell you the people that hauled the shit out of it. I've got pictures of it. What came out of there was all contaminated. Part of it take it to court. Well done.
So we have to deal with the application in front of us and the depth that they're digging currently.
I know this.
So at this current time, there is no environmental remediation being done on the site. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Thirty, just a minute.
Yep, state your name.
Just a little, I've been down there since I...
Just a little louder.
I've been down there since I purchased the property. I came into Miami. You couldn't survey the property from the scrub brush and all the trees and everything that were there. So I got approval to go ahead and clear the scrub brush so that I could survey the property. I've taken out dumpster load after dumpster load of tires that we dumped on the site. That all went to loyman waste, which is a legal disposal site. I've taken out steel that was piled up on the site. I've done nothing but clean that place up for months since I've been there. I moved sand on the site over to the other side of the property that I'm gonna use for putting up. How long I did, I moved piles of dirt and garbage that they had there, moving that out of the site. And there's been no contaminated material taken out of that site. And I've got a neighbor that I've worked with right on there that comes here every day and see where I've been there. I'm not working seven days a week down there. I'm only owned here for six months, and I'm working down there while I could. Give a reference to this. ONG, I haven't been with ONG, but ONG wants to basically take three years to do this project, and I don't wanna be tied to three years to do the project. So that's why I'm trying to, if I can go out through Lover's Lane, then I can do it. And I'm not gonna have a zillion trucks running out there down there, and that's where I'd be doing it. This is the place that if you want to clean up, put a couple ponds, and put single family house. And I think you look at what was there, you can write it down there, loved the property, and go down there, look at it now, and see what it looks like from the garbage if you knew what was there. And the gentleman that's speaking, he knows exactly what was there, what garbage was there, and what I've taken out of there. And it's a serious improvement from what was there. And a reference to the water situation, those ponds are not gonna change. Nobody's well situation, the water tank was already there, the existing pond is there. None of that is gonna change. And I don't know what else I can tell you, but I would try and be a good neighbor down there. And Mr. Metto, I'd have the conversation with him about his property and if they had to do to help him out. The road's gonna get fixed if we put a power line down there, we're gonna put a new road in. We would take care of all that stuff, which we have to do anyhow. We do on, what we do on the road, they have a right-of-way pass on, and they, they're right-of-way. They also have to maintain that. So I would get together with them and work something out so that everybody's satisfied with what I know. But I think if the water went down there, anybody looked at what was there before we signed, there's a serious improvement with what, and yes, it was a junkyard before in the gravel operation, but it's 100% better than when it started there.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions?
I'm Gianna Metton. I live at 89 Lover's Lane, I'm directly next door to the property. While I understand the concerns of our neighbors, in support of Mr. Haggerty, he has done, and having been on the property prior, it was, it was awful. And what he has done has been a massive improvement. So while I do understand, my well is on the property I'm just about. So I understand the concerns for the water and everything. I definitely don't want my well to dry up either. He's been a great neighbor, I will say that. He's helped me with some of my, you know, land rental that we've also needed, so he's, he's helped me in that area. As far as the trucks and everything going in and out, I have two dogs, so I'm not thrilled that they're gonna be barking their heads off probably eight hours a day, however many hours that's gonna be. Ideally, it would be better for the, the route to go out through ONG, and I understand that that's on the table, but not part of this particular proposal. It, a year, if it, a year's not that long, I guess, in the grand scheme of things, because what the property was before and what it could be, a home, a single-family residence and a home, and my neighbor, I would rather have that than the foreign junkyard that it was before. Now, mind you, I just bought my home in 2020, so I'm new to Plainfield, I'm new to the neighborhood. I'm not familiar with everybody and all the faces here. But in support of what he is doing as far as clearing the property, I think it looks since I know it and it was. I know that there are reservations, and I absolutely understand and feel them as well. So I just wanted to come up with something, he's, I guess, being the direct neighbor, that there is a lot of concern, but it is better than it was.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions from the audience?
Just one more. My big concern is that...
Yep, if you could just state your name for the record.
If you bring ONG in on this, I'm afraid this is, the whole thing is gonna turn into a full-flight gravel, in my backyard.
So what I can say is the application before us is not what you're describing.
I know.
So in the event someone wanted to do that operation, they would have to come back.
I mean...
Because this application does not cover that level of work.
He's saying 83,000 yardage material. Well, who's gonna monitor that? Who decides where the 83,000 yardage is? It could, it could be 160,000 yards. Is anybody gonna notice difference? Probably not. He will.
I can address that.
Thank you, Ryan.
We have a site showing the proposed grades.
Yeah, the elevations, right.
Yes. So this is what they're allowed to execute if they start going much more.
Yeah, he's saying 16 and 20 feet.
Well, so we will make periodic inspections.
Thank you. John?
They're as built, not for the structural problems.
But is there anything that would prohibit us from?
No, because if you want it, you can, you can issue it as a as-built once again.
I may, one thing regarding, regarding the footprints, pub footprints, we really can't go much bigger than footprints for a number of reasons. You, you know, you start encroaching on areas like the septic system and the home site, you do have to maintain a separation distance from the septic system. So both, both the primary and the reserve septic system have to be a minimum of 60 feet, of 50, excuse me, 50 feet from, from the high water park. So there's, you know, we're, we're really limited as, you know, what we can do on the northern side of the ponds as a result of that. As far as the southern sides of the pond, if we start getting much bigger, then we start running into some issues with stockpiling the materials, being able to transport it off the site. And then regarding the depth, because, you know, he said something, "Well, you know, it says 16 and 20 feet, they could go 50 feet." Oh, no, you really can't, because this is gravel. You know, in order to go 50 feet, you have to have the almost vertical sides going down, and these, this type of material, if it's not, goes straight down. We're showing at a two-to-one and three-to-one slope, and that's really the best we're gonna do there. You can't go one-to-one slope or a vertical slope on these things, because the sides won't cave down.
Yeah, that's right.
I have a question. I'm just having a concern. If there's an existing DEEP report, it bothers me that we don't know about it. Why do we, why would we not know that there's an existing DEEP report on this property?
I don't know if there's any existing DEEP report. I know that, I know we were told that, someone from the DEEP came down there. I'm not aware of a report.
Is there any way we can find out? If there's a report out there from DEEP?
Oops.
No, 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 I'm speaking to you.
It would be easy enough, sure, I mean, because if this were, if this were a DEEP site, there would be, there would actually be a file number on site. It would be noted, it would be DEEP...
As in, they're still digging up trucks and debris? They're just...
Well, a lot of that stuff was on the surface when he cleared the brush, because there was a lot of overbrush there. But the property was logged many, many years ago in order to make, you know, to allow for gravel excavation and term of the junkyard as well. And then over the years, what happened was you had a secondary slope, so you had all of these two, three, four-inch, you know, scrub slope all over the place, very, very tight. So when he went in there, he moved, he moved that stuff, and all these tires and metal and so forth that were on the surface, in the area where he cleaned the brush. So we pulled all that stuff out, the stockpile, and we moved it to the site. I didn't know there recently, I can tell you that the only thing I saw just up to a couple of weeks ago, and I think it was a small pile of tires out there, but the rest of the stuff...
So just to clarify, Connecticut DEEP is not involved in the cleanup because there was not a soil contamination or remediation that needed to be done on the site?
Not that I'm aware of. No.
But that's a question I'm aware of. Like you said, you know it...
Well, if there was, if there was, the town would be notified as well.
But how long ago was this that this, what came out?
I, well, we don't know it before, but...
But we can find out, right?
We can find out, yes, we can.
Ryan, is that be noted on the property records?
Possibly. Um, this is, I'm not gonna say it's going back probably 15 years ago, so I know...
So it predates only...
I don't know, but it was posted while I got here. No.
Okay.
Excuse me.
Yep.
The, 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 the,
He's gotta pay the disposal. What's the benefit for him to dig it up? Why wouldn't he bury it?
Well, we can't take intentions or motives, but-
That's a felony.
Sir, this will be your last warning, sir. Please.
I guess, I guess, I'm turning to the jurors about you. I would ask, is anybody's well contaminated right now? Does anybody have a problem with their well?
No. It's been a junkyard for forty-five years, like you said.
So all I'm saying, nobody's, nobody's well is contaminated. I'm building a single-family residence. I gotta put a well in, that's gotta get approved by the board to help. And the material that we're taking out, we dug Tesla, and I'm not questioning that. I know it was a junkyard. We knew that when I bought the property. We went in there, looked above us there. Scrap iron, tires, and we've been cleaning that stuff up. All that stuff is cleaned up to the best of our knowledge at this point. We put in these monitoring wells that they asked us to do in the town. We dug down and all that we hit was nice, clean ground. We didn't run into any other stuff. I'm not saying, I know people that dump stuff down. The concrete debris in this mess, the concrete debris in that stuff is not contamination. That's material that we can fill in the back. So once we excavate out, I mean, you're gonna be digging, you're gonna be digging in the water down there. And, you know, what's there now, you can see it. It's all gravel, it's all sand. Whether it's contaminated or not, I don't know that much. My point is, it's been there for thirty years. Nobody's well is contaminated. So, you know, I don't know. I just know I gotta, I gotta put in a well, and I gotta have a Tesla to live down there, drink the water myself. And the other thing that they're bothering, I'm not putting no crushes or any of that type of equipment down there. The reason I tried to make a deal with ONG is they could come in there and take it out and walk the back way. Then for Paulson, at this point, they wanted to take up to three years to take it out of there and take out the material that they wanted. So that's why I did not make a deal at this point. I wanted to dig the pond, I wanted to tie this stuff around. I'd like to get in there and get the thing finished. If I can't make a deal with them, then I would do it myself. Six months in a year of work, I'd be there for six months working on it without a bunch of, there's no crushes or any of that type of stuff. I'm not, that's not the intention.
Thank you. All right, so board members, you have the option to close the public hearing or to continue. So I have a motion from Roz to continue in order to resolve the issue of whether a DEEP inquiry, inspection, report, et cetera, is on the property. Do I have a second motion? I have a second by John. All in favor of continuing the public hearing?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, public hearing is continued. What's up? You're gonna take a break? I was gonna say, I don't think breaks. Are board members interested in a break? Do you wanna continue? We're almost there.
Hey, Clem.
All right. So moving on to the regular meeting, call the meeting to order. There were no, ladies and gentlemen, we still have a meeting to go on. So if you have any conversations that you wanna have, if you could take them outside this room, because the acoustics are not good for multiple conversations. Thank you. All right. There were no additions to the agenda. Paul, I need you to take your conversation out. We are in meeting still. Thank you. All right. Citizen participation. This is the opportunity for anyone in the audience to address the board on an issue that was not a public hearing item. All right. Moving on to unfinished old business. Mr. Sweet, I need you to take that conversation out in the hallway, please. Thank you. Item A, Z 2021 2104 of RMD Land Development LLC, requesting special permit for elderly housing project. Fifty-two one-bedroom units on property located on Tarbox Road, Plainfield, map 10, block 14A, lot 47, RA 60 zoning district. Session among board members. Nope, this was the public hearing we just closed tonight. Nope, Tarbox, we're on Tarbox. Oh. We're on unfinished old business. We closed the public hearing, now we need to discuss the decision. So there were some items for consideration. So milars to be submitted for commission signatures, recorded in clerk's office prior to zoning permit, restrictive covenant per section 12.25 of regulations to be submitted, reviewed and approved by town council, recorded in land records prior to receiving zoning permit. Engineering fees and legal reviews to be determined are to be paid within thirty days of billing or prior to filing milars, whichever comes first. And then the lamppost near the road is to be denied. I believe that was addressed on the plan, so that one is no longer applicable. Then there was the issue of the DEEP endangered species must be met prior to permit. Permit issuance, Ryan?
Yes. That would be the zoning permit.
Zoning permit.
Also, I have one more suggestion. So arborvitae's are closed up by the fence. Do we get a condition that the arborvitae's be green giant or other deer resistant?
Ah, okay. So deer resistant.
One other thing too, before the commission votes on this, you do have to, under section 12.25G, determine that this is a need review. That there is a need for a restricted housing.
So that just needs to be discussed, not voted on, or does it need to be a motion?
Motion.
Okay. So for board members, given the information that was presented to us, would you concur that there is a need in the town of Plainfield for elderly housing?
Yes.
Okay, so, so motion to approve the statement that it is a needed. Sean makes the motion. Roz, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, so the need has been approved. So then, given the conditions as read, I think my biggest concerns were addressed with the 500-year storm and then the revisions to the buffering and the arborvitae's. Are there any other items for discussion or review?
Do you address that staff could have approved the lamppost that was in accordance with regulations related?
Just agree reading your note? So they would just submit a revised lighting plan to you for review?
Yep.
Okay.
You can make that condition.
So that would be the additional condition?
Yes.
Lighting review? Any other items?
I'm gonna try and read off of this condition bar. Okay, so pertaining to the arborvitae's along the fence line of the driveway, they should be green giant or similar species that are deer resistant. Milars have been submitted for commission signatures, then recorded in the town clerk's office prior to receiving the zoning permit. The restrictive covenant per section 12.25 of the regulation is to be submitted, reviewed, approved by town council, and recorded in the land records prior to receiving the zoning permit. Engineering fees and legal review fees, which are still to be determined, are to be paid within thirty days of billing or prior to filing the milars, whichever comes first. However, the restrictive covenant that requires a review of that might be later than following that. The lamppost near the road is to be denied, which has been approved, actually, because it does not meet current regulations related trespass. However, the commission can grant the staff the ability to review and approve the revised plan, which includes this lamppost in the future, if it complies with regulations. It should be noted that the commission is currently entertaining text amendment for revisions to the lighting regulations that could allow this particular lamppost to install. And final one is DEEP's approval for the species study be submitted prior to approval of zoning permit.
Okay. So the conditions have been read into the record. Are there any other comments, questions, items for discussion?
I'm gonna make a motion with the conditions I correct.
Okay, motion by Sean to approve with conditions as read. Second by John. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, application is approved with conditions. Item B, Z 2021 2172, Town Plainfield Planning and Zoning Commission, requesting a text amendment to section 19.3.8 of zoning regulations pertaining to lighting. Were there any items for discussion on the proposed regulation? All right. Given no items, I'll entertain a motion.
Get a little bit tighter with that. You should let him know that.
Yeah, you know that.
That was mentioned in the public hearing, so call that.
All right. So I'll entertain a motion on the application.
I'll make a motion.
Motion to approve by John. And I also need an effective date, correct?
Yes, we do December 1st.
December 1st. So would you amend your?
I'll make a motion to approve with effective date.
Okay, a motion by John with an effective date of December 1st, 2021.
Second hit.
I have a second by Roz. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay. Application is approved and effective December 1st. Item C, Z 2021 2197, has been continued, so we do need to motion to continue the old business.
I'll make a motion to continue.
All right, a motion to continue by Roz. Second by Sean. All in favor of continuing?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right. Moving on to new business. Item A, Z 2021 2144 of Spicer Road Realty LLC, requesting a special permit for earth excavation on property located on Black Hill Road, assessors map 7, block 53A, lot 55. And this does require a public hearing.
Motion instead of a public hearing?
Second. A motion by Sean to schedule a public hearing. Second by Roz. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
And just for clarification, that will be the December meeting. I'll just check the date on that. So that will be the December 14th meeting at 7:00.
Okay. So next meeting, public hearing. Approval of the October 12 minutes, I don't believe we have a quorum for those meeting minutes, so they cannot be acted on tonight.
Well, they're not a problem.
What's up? I know. That happens at the end of every year, it seems. So they will just be adopted by default? Am I correct on that?
People have pushed off.
There won't be a quorum, because the members that were present will no longer be serving. So they will default in general record. They won't be able to be-
Why can't you approve them tonight?
Because the members that were present were John, Sean, and Kathy. So we don't have a quorum to vote on the meeting minutes. And then Kathy and Sean will no longer be members to December meeting, which leaves only John.
Well, frankly, there is no requirement, as ridiculous as it sounds, there is no requirement that members be present at a meeting and then at the next, so that they can act on the minutes of that meeting. There is no requirement that you, for example, you and Roz weren't here last month.
Correct.
There's no requirement that you had to be, that prohibited you from acting tonight.
So you're saying we can do that?
Yep.
Okay. Sounds good to me.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Sean. Second by John. All in favor? Aye. Meeting minutes are approved. Any correspondence?
None.
None?
Nothing other than was-
I wanna jinx this moment. Item 10, other, discussion of accessory dwelling units. Did you have a draft or item for discussion?
I do not have a draft, however, I do have a staff report that I submitted with a bunch of things for you to think about. How many members go through it? Think about what direction you'd like to go? Have any ideas?
Still thinking.
I'm gonna make a motion the next month for that member.
Second. Agreed. So motion to continue. A second by Roz. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, so continue to next month. Please make sure new members get a copy. Review and approve the 2022 meeting dates, which is standard second Tuesday of every month, 7:00 to 10:00 PM.
I'll make a motion to approve.
A motion by Roz to approve. Second by John. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Meeting dates are approved, second Tuesday of every month, 7:00 PM. Report from zoning enforcement.
Okay, so 14 Canterbury Road, Mitchell Volio, junk vehicle is putting on property. Progress is still being made over there. Still working on it. I'd say more than half of what he has picked things up. Hopefully done by the end of the year. 3244 North Roads, we got LLC, Old Joyce City Savings. There is a remote pre-trial conference scheduled for November 22nd at 9:30. Let's see what happens there. 211 King Downing Road, back in the property for construction equipment, operation of a business and residential as well. So on October 13th, both briefs, both from the town and the defendant, were submitted to the courts, who were home hearing held on October 19th, regarding the caseload pertaining to the files briefed. The hearing was held, judge ruled and denied a temporary injunction, so we have to continue with normal court proceedings. So that is our. 13 Simmons Ave, Doug Briscoe, motor vehicle junkyard. That has been passed by the council for court action.